Tony, how are you? We call this meeting to order. Room call, please.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Neville.
Here.
Phillips.
Yes.
PermaC.
Pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of guests, we have Greg, Mr. Neville, Debbie Lynn, Doug Johnson. I guess that didn't move down to the public comments if you wouldn't like to speak. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and claims and accounts.
A and P, N and D, two thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars seventy-eight cents. Ameren, one thousand six hundred ten dollars sixty-five cents. Applegate, estimating one thousand four hundred fifty dollars. B Consulting, six hundred thirty dollars. Blue Cross Blue Shield, five thousand forty-three dollars eighty-five cents. Casey's Business Mastercard, one thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars five cents. Farmers Bank, one thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars two cents. I and B, four thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars ninety-eight cents. PH Brothman Sons, one thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars seventy-four cents.
Any questions on the claims and accounts for the minutes? All in a hand motion to approve the consent agenda. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Is there any public comments on the agenda items? Chris, you have recreational marijuana is on the agenda, and that's what topics we'd like to discuss. You have, you have the Florida syrup, you would like to make any comments?
I don't know where you're at, the whole city council is on this. But you know, I think there's a lot of communities around that are not going with this. And I don't know where you guys are at. But I kind of think you guys ought to maybe, maybe we shouldn't do it. Maybe a year later and see how things go, maybe open it up again. I don't think we ought to just go into it. I'm not for it anyway. I just want to throw out my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments on the agenda items? Doug, you are on here to speak about the TIP and economic development. The TIP extension is on the agenda. Would you like to speak now, or I will let you speak as we're speaking about it, if you would like?
Yeah, I'm just making myself available for the discussion when it comes to.
Okay. Okay, reports by officers. Tony?
Same stuff, schools and stuff, everything's going well. We got several drills. Some are handled for safety. We spoke with the kids, so they seem to be doing well.
Public works?
Just a couple of things. The first thing was about the random that I passed out to everybody. I know it's, it should have been sent via email. I just did not get to that point. I apologize. Had time for that. But I think we need to at least have a small discussion about how we plan to proceed forward with the LEAP program in the current situation we are in. It would be nice if we could all come to an agreement, or at least have a few ideas out there of how we want to do this. Do we want to ban the program for the year? Do we, how do we want to do it? So that's why I ask for your input upon that. The other thing I had was on lift station number three, we have got the back and we're just waiting on the pump to come back from being overhauled essentially. The isolation valve that we need to replace has been replaced. All good there, so we're just waiting for the pump to return. And then we'll start the process all over with the air pump. That's pretty well what, also, one other thing you notice. Part of Spring Street shut down due to a valve problem on the city's end for as far as supplying water down there. So, we had a meeting between myself, the contractor, and the school. We put our heads together and decided that it made entirely more sense to go ahead and have them dig the street up and put their new water service tap in now and use it on a temporary basis until they actually get the building built. Rather than tearing the street apart twice for a repair on our end, it would be basically eight months to a year, and it'd be abandoned anyway. So that's why that project is in motion at this time as well.
Here?
That's pretty much what I had to report this evening.
Any new news on the force main?
No, sir.
Does anybody have any questions from?
What's the game plan right now for the leaves as a? Well, there's several different ways that I think, that are rolling around the back of my mind. Obviously, the public has access to the wastewater pond seven days a week. I mean, they can transport their own if necessary. And if you look within our ordinances, we do have the availability to burn leaves. It's quite limited if you read the ordinance on certain hours and certain days a week that can be done. My theory is, and I'm willing to do thus, is if they are willing to bag them and put them on the curb like they would stacked for the back, we will, we will make the effort with our back on our trucks and do it every week as opposed to only running our brush once a month. Just load bags, take them out there, load bags, take anything we can do to try to keep up and help the situation out, least ways till we figure out how we're going to go about our back.
What are, what is, do you have an estimate of the cost of the repairs?
Initially, I don't have one on paper. When we took the machine there, you weren't at the last minute, so I'm going to get you the speed on that. What they told me was it would probably be looking between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. And that was just a guesstimation without tearing the machine apart, just taking a look at it, sitting there. Now, mind you, this is on a machine that's eighteen years old. It is in, it's not from lack of work or lack of maintenance on our part, it's just physically wore out. It has physically wore itself apart.
Right.
And when you stop and think about what it goes through, it's not like it just vacuums up leaves. Sticks, bricks, rocks, swirls. Whatever gets in the way, trust me, that pack will get a hold of, and you'll hear it come through there. And in that time, it has just wore that machine to doubt.
What's the cost of the new machine?
Between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. I have also entertained the thought about seeing if I could rent one. I don't know the availability of that, but I think it's probably something worth looking at. Least to get us through the season. Those are pretty much my ideas on the.
Is there, is there anything wrong with the engine?
Engine itself doesn't seem to have any issues.
That engine will run a long time.
That is, that's been one thing, it's been a constant. We're having, we've replaced the hoes on it. It's got axle underneath of it problems. It, the list is long, distinguished. Impeller, color housing, bearings. It's just physically worn out.
Right.
If it's any consolation, the last time I spoke with the man, which was two days ago, well, no, it was last Thursday, I guess, it'll be longer than two days. The average life of those machines is approximately ten years. The nature of the work that they do and what they go through. So, it's really a testament to our machine, in my opinion, but nevertheless, it doesn't help us in this situation right now. Right?
Matt, what brand was that?
OBD? Or no, ODB. Yeah, ODB, sorry.
I heard that. Do you know what the model number is or anything like that off the top of your head?
Unfortunately, no, I do not.
Can you get that for me, please?
I can.
I mean, I know this doesn't help now, but in the future, I think we should look at preventing maintenance a little bit different on machinery, if that's the case, if they're wearing out like this, where we're fixing it where we're not fifteen, twenty grand in a hole. So, right now, I will look and see what I can find for rentals and stuff, if that's okay with you. Like I did with the other things. Try to help out with that.
Appreciate it. Please put that on the agenda for the next meeting with Kelly. We'll try to make the decision at the next meeting exactly which way to move forward, and we'll move on from there.
Should we give anything out to the public that we're delayed at all, Matt?
I have not.
Just so they don't start to stay.
As I've done, I'm game to do it. That's where, part of where I want to have a discussion with you guys first, to at least think that we have a game plan going forward.
Because I've already seen files fighting with the anticipation.
Okay. Anything else from that? City Treasurer, Tricia.
Deposits kind of slim this time, but we did get our quarterly, and now green power payment of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty, which does go into the Economic Development Planning Board account. It's kept separate. So other than that, we really didn't get much this last two weeks. I also handed out underneath through deposits some transfers that I completed as of August thirty-first to clear up the interfund activities for accounts payables, any audit adjustments, so we can start at a clear spot. Going forward, our transfer should just be for the payables for the month before. So we can kind of keep a better account of what's actually in the accounts versus what's owed to each other. So, I made a little note down at the bottom, going forward, there should only be one month of the inner activities. Interfund activities outstanding unless otherwise noted, and that would be presented to council if there was some reason, especially with some of the water and sewer projects, if there's something big that comes up and we can't cover out of those funds, then we would make note of why we didn't, you know, do those transfers. Right now, we're okay, but I know there's some things in the works coming up that may cause that not to happen, so. But we're just going to try to keep a better record of if there's anything outstanding, what it's for, and why we didn't transfer it within that month. So we can keep those balances to a minimum if we can. Make sense? Any questions on that? And then the only other thing, we are having our audit. Air water, whatever they're called. This coming next week. If you didn't know.
Tricia, on the changing of the financial reports to include those expenses?
Yeah, she said it should happen this month. But it takes a little bit longer. She's got to do some finagling a little bit to get them to work that way. Just because she's got to go back and I don't say adjust, because she's not really adjusting, just to show it that as all cash basis and not a crow basis on those accounts.
Any questions?
It'll just take a little bit more work for her to go back and do the last couple parts.
Understood.
I guess is what I should have said.
Thank you, Tricia. Greg, do you have, do you have something to report, sir?
The council was had discussed the building inspector's position and was wanting to know what exactly, you know, things I was working on. So what I did was I put together, I had about eighteen pages of stuff from last year. It was kind of highlights, including Willie's house in it, and I kind of slowed down documenting because it was so time consuming. But after you asked for, you know, what we're working on now, the last two weeks is also documented in here, and I made some copies for everybody, and you can do whatever. Go through some of it and all of it.
Thank you.
So how would you suggest, should I just go through the, you want to go through the whole thing?
Want to just hit the highlights and like what the different pages are and where the last two weeks start off?
The first eighteen pages again were things that started in two thousand eighteen. And, you know, I tried, I started documenting about every conversation. I have Ralph Beck using the building in here. I've got Willie's house in here. I again, I slowed down at the end of last year because it was the time consuming. But if you go about, oh, what I also did is I read through the cookbook three times. That was very interesting. But there's a, I've got a spot in here that I, the sheet that I used because it takes the stuff from about five different spots for fences and all that, and puts it together. So to go through past last year, there's a spot in there, the following seventeen pages are the notes that I did since you guys asked. What I did. Had information from Paula on a commercial building permit from Inland Tool that was back on the twenty-seventh. Got a request for Cheryl Roberts. She was buying a house, and she's getting one, some permits for a new garage. I got Oh, Brian Adams, the guy that we use for doing the building inspection, is certified only for residential. He's in the process of taking an online course and way close to the end of that for inspecting commercial property. Because at one time, we thought we were going to be involved with the school, didn't realize that the state board education and they took care of, every time you build a school, building permits and all that are not considered, they're all through them. But with the new Inland Tool building coming up, I had him push forward with getting certified as commercial so that he can inspect that. He's, he's comfortable with going through and initialing the phases until he actually gets his commercial license, and then he can go back and sign that. I had some problem buildings that the city had been discussing for probably a year, two years. And at the request of the, of the city, I had Brian do an outside safety inspection of the Old Miniger Hill, the back of.
The Plasky House. The, the old Plasky House, isn't that what it is?
Yeah, it's, there's just a one-story
Yes.
building on the back. And, and thirdly, there's over on the, on Washington Street, there's a small antique store upstairs. It's next to Deanna Hollis's two rental properties, and the bricks, paper's been falling off of the building. And I went ahead and had Brian kind of do a safety inspection on that because, I mean, I got a complaint. That's going to end up being interesting because I got a call from the lady today where she wants to sit down and talk about why we did that, so.
From Bobby?
Yeah. And she wants to discuss the, the report and the things that Brian found. I mean, I guess they took the, if there was a fire escape or something on the back, they, they took that off. There's no way to get out of the second floor if there's a fire. So, they can't, they can use the storage, but they can't rent it or anything, I assume. So, I'm real busy with my mom. She's in the hospital right now. She's, I'm a POA, and so I told Bobby, I said, I called her today, I said, as soon as that's done, I'll sit down and go through it with you. So she said, fine. But I got a call back last Saturday that Inland wanted to start right away with their new building project, a two-hundred by two-hundred foot building. So, I worked with Greg Mc, McFerrin, I can't, I can't hear his last name. And we put together a building permit. I signed it a couple of days ago, delivered it to them today, talked to the owner. Brian and I went to the owner down there, and they've already started the dirt work. So, the permit's good on that. We've got some rental inspections that are not as easy as the other rental inspections, trying to schedule time. I'm not sure I want to mention names, but in there.
I wouldn't mention any names.
Just. The way we do the inspections is, he does the first inspection, he builds the city, Brian does. Then if it fails, we do a reinspection, and then he builds the city. If it fails again, the first reinspection, we bill the landlord two hundred dollars. So we've had to do that on several occasions, and right now, we've got some money outstanding. And we also have a fine on a property where somebody was allowed to move in. The property was, had not passed inspection. So.
I think that's probably pretty sufficient unless there's anything else noteworthy that you want to point on.
I mean, I can, I don't even want to, I don't want to eat up the whole.
No, you're fine. I, I mean, maybe the best way to report is let the alderman read through this, and if they have any questions
I think so.
about your procedure, I'm sure.
I'd be fine doing that. And if you, do you want me to continue to document what I'm doing? Was this kind of answer what your guys' questions were?
I, I don't think you need to document anymore for us unless the next council after us wants another thing. But whatever you feel, I mean, you're, you're still kept notes after. Right, I mean, whatever system you find the best, Greg, I'm, you know, I'm okay with you doing it.
Right now, it's in, I've got an, an email folder called City Mount Plasky, and everything that Paula and I and Brian, all of the interchanges and my responses, I've gone and copied myself. And I've got this, I've got a huge, I pay for extra storage, so I never got to run out on my email account. So I've got everything that I've done this year so far, I've got it all documented with my email. So if you have a question, I can go back through there and pick that out and tell you what kind of conversation we're in. Also, I think we're on maybe building permit, like nineteen this year, which is almost to double what we had last year. I think part of that may be because some things were just kind of getting done on the side and we didn't know about it. And now, I take some time and I drive around town if I see something going on, and, and I know I don't have a permit, I stop and talk to them. And I've not had a problem with anybody, but I'm trying to be fair with everybody, so if I'm dealing with one person with a building permit, then I make sure that I do that with all the right kind of people. Brian Adams is now, well, buildings that, like if somebody builds a garage, okay? In the past with Lyle and the Tower of Congregate, there was really, there was, I think, some cursory inspections done. But now with our building permit, there are six different levels of where it says that you need somebody to inspect. And I bought a new stamp, and I've got it stamped in there, and red on all of the, of the new building permits going out. And they contact me, I contact Brian, and Brian goes out and inspects those, like, I mean, the puddings are done, you know, the wiring's done for cheating, drywall going on the walls of the garage. And that's more than we were doing before, but I'm very comfortable in continuing to do it that way because you're, I think we're getting a lot safer, a lot more continuity.
Right.
And the one, the other thing that is a follow-up to all this, and then I'll be quiet. We're back to two thousand three building codes. That's, for some reason, that's where the city started. The ones that are out now are, they come out every three years, are two thousand eighteen. So, Brian, right now, as he's trying to do these inspections, if somebody says, hey, you know, your code's clear back to two thousand three, he can't do that and sign it because it's not safe. There are a lot of new things out there. So I'm going to recommend that the city council move all of our, you know, move our building codes up to two thousand eighteen.
Didn't we just move up to two thousand fifteen?
We just, we, I don't believe so. We discussed it.
We were discussing it.
If you did, then I missed it.
Not enough support to move up to two thousand fifteen.
If you, you know, fifteen would be fine, but eighteen would be better because in another year, year and a half, we'll be at two thousand twenty-one.
Right. So my question is, if we were, if we were to update, you know, the newest codes, which they update them every three years, and it's you know, whatever, does that mean that if a rental inspection comes due and they're not up to the new new code, then the inspection fails?
No, you're only obligated to comply with the code that's been adopted by the municipality. So, it's, it's as if, what is it, two thousand twelve?
Three.
Three, two thousand three, that's, that's the standard that you need to meet. Nothing more. It doesn't matter that there's a new code out, the city's adopted the two thousand three version. That's the gold standard.
And what I'm getting back from Brian, because he inspects houses. If somebody wants to buy a house, they hire him to come in and do the, an inspection and a report, so they'll know what kind of house they're getting. His recommendation is that, that we move it up because, you know, there are some things in, in those building codes that have changed that would make our rental properties in town safer. So that, you know, my recommendation is eighteen, or you can do fifteen or twelve, I don't know, but I think we need to get up from three.
Whose code are you using, would be my next question? Because you have different cities that have different codes. So that's the next thing you get into, the state code. So each city have, other than that, has their own codes.
And for the most part, each city adopts the national
Yes.
code. So there's a couple of pages of, hey, this is how the city indicator interprets sub subsection F and double G and. Code, so there's a couple of pages of, hey, this is how the city Decatur interprets sub, subsection F and double G and twenty-three B, whatever. But then for the most part, they all adopt a, a version, somebody's version of a national code.
And that's.
And there's a national, there's a national code for, you know, new construction, existing rental properties, you know, electrical, fire, I mean, there's a code for everything. We'll think about it. Maybe I'll call Brian.
Okay.
Anything else for Greg? Old business tip extension, I put that on there, uh, I was requested, Tom Martin asked me to put a couple of things on the agenda at his request, I obliged. Um, he's not here, I'm assuming he's probably in the field, he's probably going pretty hard. I, I assume that he would have something to present on that matter. I don't know, I know it was talked about at the last meeting with Doug, um, I don't have anything new per se unless somebody else does.
Along those lines of the tip extension and, uh, whether or not we extend it, we still have TIF money left to spend of the existing.
Yes.
I, I did wanna discuss a bit about how we can, what's the council's thought on, on using that in that area and what kinda projects we wanna. My initial take is things that are beneficial to all would be like paving the entire lot down there or repaving. And I don't have a good feel for how much that would cost, if that would get the rest of the money or if there's still some left. But what else could we do to kinda get some costs, I don't know, what other ideas do we have that we wanna spend the money on that would benefit the whole area? One, one thing I'm concerned about is like not just giving all, like whatever money's left, not just benefiting Doug, but like the whole area. So like paving the lot, that, that makes total sense and I'm sure there's a couple of other things that I can't think of, but lighting, that's a good idea. Or Doug, if you had other thoughts that you thought would be appropriate uses.
There, there's been some consideration to, uh, have an access road from one twenty-one directly into the lot. So that would be a, uh, beneficial to Dollar General and the Dairy Bar and whatever business would actually move into the, uh, prior doctor's office. That'd be one thing that.
Do you know when that would happen?
Be part of the initial project if it was to move ahead with that. Things of that nature I can see would be, and I agree, it should be things that are beneficial to the general area, the population would make it better for everybody, not just one business, I agree with that.
I don't know how we go about getting numbers, I, I've been required into repaving the lot and getting like an initial ballpark value of what that would cost. As far as the adding the entrance, I, I don't know, but I, I'd like to put some rough numbers to that. Because if we are gonna extend the TIF district, I, I'd rather have a plan of here's what we're gonna do with the money to make it, rather than, I, I don't wanna just extend the TIF district and say, we'll figure out something to spend the money on, I think that's ineffective.
Well, there is a business plan in the TIF, which I believe we're reusing for the TIF extension.
Yes. And anybody in the TIF district can approach with a proposed project too. So it's not just dependent on what we come up with, so there's a zillion ways you can use the money, you know, and, uh. So part of it is, uh, you know, Doug or anybody else that has property in the TIF district can approach the city about, um, getting involved in the project and we can come up with an arrangement. So it's not exclusively in our hands, you know, they can approach us with projects that would benefit the whole TIF district, so.
Okay. Anything else on the TIF extension? Recreational marijuana ordinance. I don't have anything new, I've been kinda busy as well these last couple of weeks. Um, I do know that Andrew reached out to Jordan about what needed to be done to have three percent sales tax. Is there any report on that?
And I think my follow-up is, is the city sure it's gonna move forward with allowing cannabis dispensaries? Again, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. If we're gonna implement a three percent sales tax, that means that some form of commerce is gonna happen in the city. Is that dispensaries, is that craft makers, is that groweries and is that transportation? You know, what's gonna get a three percent sales tax, what are we gonna allow, is, is there gonna be any restriction on it? Cause if we just implement the three percent tax, but then don't put any zoning restrictions on it, the first of the year is gonna roll around and. In, in practice, nothing's gonna happen in the first year of the year cause City of Mount Plasky doesn't have any current dispensaries. And the first licenses for new dispensaries won't issue until middle of twenty twenty anyways. But when that time rolls around, without any zoning restrictions on it, it's, uh, it's open market on where stuff can pop up. The three percent sales tax wouldn't ever go into effect until September one, twenty twenty. So really, I think we can decide that issue a little bit later. That's the earliest date it would ever go into effect, no matter what. So I think if the city needs to have more discussion or hold an open, you know, town hall or a forum or something like that, they should do it sooner rather than later to make a decision on. What and where, if there's any restrictions, so that we can have a zoning meeting, have a zoning ordinance enacted in, in time for the new year. Cause again, inaction means there's no restrictions.
Other than what's in the state statute.
And there's no longer any restrictions on locations for any new dispensary license issued, basically at, at the, as of the first of the year. So there used to be restrictions for existing license, existing dispensaries, you couldn't open up with, with near a school, daycare, church.
Right, the fifteen hundred feet stuff.
Right. The new law abolished that, those restrictions for any new dispensaries that open up. So it's, it's really.
But they would have to be in the commercial zoning of the city, right?
If that's what we want.
Well, they would be a business, why wouldn't they be restricted to the commercial zoning?
I think that's right, I think that's right, they have to comply with the laws that we've got, you're right, but within that commercial zoning space.
Right, we can lock it down even further.
Yeah. And do you want groweries, do you want dispensaries, do you want craft producers, do you want transportation, do you, you know?
To backpedal a bit, if, are we sure that they would have to be within the commercial zone to sell? If I wanna start selling something like not marijuana out of my garage, like, I, I could do that now without restrictions.
No, you'd have, you're open to the public doing business, holding yourself out to the public.
You would have to have a state license to do that.
Right, and to have that license, would it have to be in the commercial district?
The state would require you to follow any zoning ordinance on the books at the time of the issuance of the license. So if, in order to open up a business in the City of Mount Plasky, you have to be in a commercial zone area, that's a limitation. So you'd have to follow that limitation, but what we can do is limit it even further. And again, just because it's a dispensary, you might treat that different, you know, you're not gonna open up a grow house in a commercial area right now, cause that just might not be feasible. So. So for what it's worth, I think the city council needs to make a decision on what we're gonna allow, where we're gonna allow it. And then at that point, implement a three percent sales tax if, if we're gonna allow it.
What are, what are some of the council's, like, must haves? Like if, like if, if we, if we do decide to allow it, what, what restriction would you absolutely have want?
I'm okay with it just being in the, the, uh, the commercial districts as they're, you know, they're kinda limited as they're, as they are now, so.
Right.
Without double checking where all of the specific boundaries are, but.
I would say in addition to that, the same staples of fifteen hundred feet from. Daycares and stuff like that.
Schools, churches.
Cause right now, I think the business district is pretty close to the high school.
Close, as, as I am too.
Yes.
Closest would be Christian church.
How long is a city block?
At least now it's eight hundred and eighty.
Eight hundred and fifty feet.
We would say three hundred and fifty feet.
Only every three hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, by the first meeting in November, I wanna get, I'd like to have an ordinance in place if we could. That way, if we wanna do anything with the sales tax, we have until, we can get that done in the.
And sales tax can, we can decide sales tax in beginning of twenty twenty.
Okay.
We, we, if, if we want the sales tax to go into effect on September first, we need to let the state know by June one. So we still got time on the sales tax part. That doesn't need to get decided before the first of the year. What needs to get decided is if you're gonna allow it, if you're not gonna allow it and what restrictions we wanna put on it.
If I could, can I get an informal straw poll on whether or not, if there was an ordinance that was created to allow a dispensary in town, what would everybody say?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
I don't know yet.
Tax still up in arms?
I, I don't know what you mean by the question, I'm, I'm against marijuana, so I think my answer's no.
So it would, so it would be no, yeah.
But I would still, if, if the council's gonna restrict it, like that's, that's better than not restricting at all, so.
Right, well, I'm talking about like allowing, allowing it at all. We have that, we have the right to say that they cannot be allowed here.
Right, right. I would, I would, I'd be in favor of that far.
That would be, that would be yours, okay. Right, I mean, I, we have to know where we're at with it, if we're gonna go through all this time to write up all these restrictions, if, if there's, if the council's not gonna approve that they're allowed.
You know, we might wanna consider having an, an open public hearing like Jordan suggested.
Yes, that is a good idea as well.
If we're split on that.
Do we know what some of the other cities in the county have done?
I could not tell you, no.
Might be worthwhile seeing what, seeing what everybody else does, I mean.
I know Walensburg's not in our district, or county, but they're gonna have a public forum, just from the news, Decatur's not gonna allow it, Forsyth isn't gonna allow it.
Urbana just voted to, to allow it, so.
A shock there. It's campus town.
Right. You said Decatur and Forsyth have voted to not allow it, correct?
Decatur voted.
Forsyth, thirty voted no.
Morton, Illinois, is no. Naperville is no.
We'd have a public forum or like some other places are, I mean, on the ballot is a non-voting referendum to. Probably four of the rallies. Yet four people.
Uh, we had the one for the water co-op and several, I mentioned, I mentioned fifty people showed up. I'll, uh.
You're making controversy.
I'll get ahold of, uh, I'll get ahold of the Christian church, we'll get something set up here in the next, hopefully we can get it done this month or, or early next month. That way, by the time the holidays rolls around, we, uh, we have decided what we're gonna do. I think that my advice to the council is to take the public input very seriously and really, you know, vote the way your constituents feel, you know, it's kind of our job here, so.
Can I ask a question, man? When you say not allow it, does that mean not allow the use of it or not allow the sale of it?
We, we cannot, they, not allow the sale of it.
Okay.
I mean, that, it, we cannot stop them from driving to Springfield, which does allow it, buy it, come to their home and, and consume it, we cannot stop that.
And really, the, the articles that I have read, the, the medical people, doctors have, you know, will not even write out prescriptions. There, there's still a lot of research being done about this and I worry about if we're talking about dispensaries and the sale of the gummies. Um, I mean, they talked about brownies, I mean, there's just a lot of different things. And the gummy bears really bothered me when I was reading about that. Children see gummy bears and, okay, we got some gummy bears here that are laced and these are children's gummy bears. Are we going to, I mean, I, I just, it bothers me. You get a little second, third grader, oh, there's gummy bears. And they say it takes from thirty, thirty minutes to four hours. And if someone eats one or two and, and it's really not working, oh, I'll have some more and then four hours later, they're like, wow. And the same thing can happen with a brownie.
I think a public meeting would be good, I guess.
Greg, who's in charge, do you know who's in charge of scheduling down there?
It's still Dyer.
Probably, uh, Dyer.
Amy Dyer.
Amy Dyer.
Okay. We're having a pretty good discussion about it, I hate to move on unless someone's got something to say, now's the time to say it. Okay, let me on. I am not aware of a business district appropriation, Tim, is this correct?
Yep, no, that's correct.
The town square renovation was the other item that was put on there at the request of Tom. Uh, I was not able to go to the meeting last Saturday. Andrew, were you able to go or? Any chance you might be able to have some sort of a report or? From what I gather from Tom, before anything moves forward, they want the city and the, and the development board to work with the engineer to, you know, come up with a plan to where we get accomplished what we want infrastructure-wise. As opposed to just beautification of it, is that kinda?
Yep, that, that's pretty much it. So the, the board has kinda settled on a, I would say like a preliminary design, like the, what the different corners and entrances to the square would look like. That can still change very much, but the next step now is to kinda get some, some price estimates of if we do one corner at a time, like how much of the corner, if we do it all, like, and see where in the budget that aligns. So the, the big need is like when we do the, the first corner we do, there's a fire hydrant there. And then we just need to have a plan as a city, like, we need, we wanna replace that hydrant while we're there. And then where's the best place to stop and, and kind of minimize money for the maximum effect? So yeah, yeah, and that's really the only infrastructure that would be done at the time, there's no sewers around the square. And, uh, I guess electric, but they're looking at putting that in, in the concrete so you won't have the overhead lines and that's not all planned out yet, but. That's kind of an initial report, I'll try to bring the pictures next time, they're at the Fall Fest, I don't know if anybody saw them.
Yeah, I had, I did have some questions from, for some people, I was worried about the kickouts on every corner. Drag, I mean, there were, you know, three guys in the house now, that's gonna put a major.
That's what I said, same thing. Snow removal would be a nightmare with that, yes.
Right.
I, I painted it, the, the outline of one on, over there, I don't know if you saw that. Point well taken.
I think there's better ways of beautifying, if we're talking about making that square look a little bit better than doing that. And I think about those guys with their snowplow.
Because one, once wiped with a plow, it'll wipe that out, I guarantee you.
And it wouldn't be an intentional.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that.
But if you get that snowplow up so high and you don't, yeah, I mean, you're gonna hit it.
Yeah, it, it certainly, something would change, but, uh, I don't know, my thought is. Yeah, it, it certainly, something would change, but, uh, I don't know, my thought is, we want cater to people, not to snowplows, and.
Have you driven Lincoln lately?
Right.
All across the square?
So that, that's a, that's a big topic of discussion, and the consensus is, they went out too far with those, and they're not really symmetrical, so, yeah. One, one thing I would say about that, that maybe is totally bad, is cars go slower, and it's much more pedestrian friendly. So it's kind of a balance there.
That is true, they do go slower, yeah.
If, if there's something that you would like looked at differently, we can, it's still early in the design.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it was brought to my attention, so that's why I brought it up, I brought it up here, so. And I, I mean, I agree with that, I mean, just. I mean, you're putting something out there, this, I guarantee you that it will get to work. Absolutely, I, I just, that's just my opinion of it.
Man, if that's the case, though, like, every intersection in town, like, how, how do we drive, like, if. If we can't put something next to the road, not worrying about it.
So, here, here you go. Have you ever grown a snowplow before?
Not, not a large truck, no.
No. So, there you go, that's the first thing, it's totally different than driving a rigor vehicle, cause it not mad.
Well, I do.
Or a tractor or something, and then you get some mice underneath it. So, you're looking at thirty thousand pounds compared to five thousand pound car.
Well, another thing, in, in reference to where, what you just mentioned, Andrew, is, if you take a look at our catch basins around town, obviously they're right on the corner of streets, and. And what traffic and, and trucks and garbage trucks have, have done to those, no matter how many times we dig them apart and put them back together, they just continue to destroy them for us. Now, I'm not against making our square look better, it's really aesthetically what those designs are, it looks beautiful. But I, I just don't think that it necessarily, like Joyce says, fits our mold, so to speak, you know, and. And in reference to what Willie's saying, yeah, you haven't lived till you've got six ton of salt behind you, and you can't stop. I don't want to be responsible for destroying one of those corners. I mean, I'm not saying that would happen, but there's always a chance they're up, obviously, just like anything else.
Just a thought, the process, you know, some.
Chris?
I just got a question after fire hydrants. Does anybody know when the mains were put in, to feed the fire hydrants?
Around the square, like eighteen ninety.
So, I can tell you this scenario, about five years ago, at the receiving dock at our plant, we put all new, uh, concrete in, took all the asphalt, they're just eight inches thick. And right when they were doing, we had a fire main break, it's eight inch. I was able to catch it in time to get there and they shut down, and we replaced one line, and I tried to get the boss to replace the other two hundred feet, he wouldn't spend the money. Four weeks ago, it leaked, so they're cutting the whole thing up, and putting new line in, but they are able to bore it in now, but still, it could have been a lot cheaper.
Right.
So.
I'm all about replacing all the water mains on the square if it's feasible with the plan, but if they're not planning on tearing up the road. I mean, not only.
Well, those mains, for one, like you say, run the metal to the outside edge, not toward the inside edge.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Chris.
But I think, you know, just from an operational standpoint, I think we need to spend more focus on our treatment plant, before we make a focus upon our mains. I mean, if we can, if we're not solving a quality issue first, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
You're almost kind of putting like Jordan said earlier, putting the cart before the horse, in some of the stand. Now, soon as I say that, you know, hopefully nothing goes wrong, obviously, but, you know. They're our original system, like Andrew said, eighteen ninety-five.
Like if anything's tore up, we fix it, it needs to be fixed, that, my opinion.
If it's exposed, that makes perfectly good sense.
We fix it, period, or replace, I mean, that's just, that's my opinion.
I mean, you're not gonna tear the street clear, clear out to the middle or toward the outside edge to do this project, it's not in the scope of this project.
Okay.
No, so get an idea of like, where's the best place to stop when they do dig it up, or do we, you know, can we bore it to get back to the main, I, I don't know.
I think the best thing to do, at least just my opinion, i- i- is that we do that, there's, there's a hydrant on all four corners, and that would be the time to, to. Replace the each hydrant, period.
Yes.
Be done with it. Because you're gonna have it all to, if you want to go another hundred years and not replace one, or have to, have to tear it back out because of, that makes perfectly good sense, and you're gonna be there within that scope of that job.
Other infrastructure that I did forget about is the catch basins, so.
That needs work anyway, so that, that's a, that's a definite plus.
So those would be reworked to drain appropriately, like curb drains on the side and still tie into the existing drains. That, that's very much a, I think, dig it up, see what you get, pipe them in when you do it, cause, would you disagree with that?
You can, you can pretty much make them any way you want, just as long as you're attached into that storm sewer line, it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference in what they look like, or style. You can make them an ornate style to match your decor of what you're building.
Okay, anything else? Do you know when the next town square renovation meeting is?
Not off the top of my head, I think it's October sixteenth.
Did you go to that meeting on Saturday morning, Tim?
Yes.
Is it the, any, any new news as far as town square from that meeting, or?
No, I didn't, Andrew covered it pretty well, you know, they're gonna do pricing right now, then the next step after that is trying to secure all the financing.
Okay. All right, any other business? I have one item, there's a zoning meeting to, uh, here at the variance that was requested by Mr. Terry Mylum, November fourth, that article is in the, uh, we put that ad out in the Courier, so. If anyone would like to attend that, six thirty here at City Hall.
I, I do have a few other things.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the recycling center, I've been trying to get ahold of overridingers to make a sign, I, I don't know if they don't do it anymore, but I, I can't get ahold of them. Anybody has their number or whatever, I'll, I'll give them a call, I also have a quote for just a company on Peoria to make a sign, it's like two hundred dollars, and that's them designing it, they'll send it to us, make sure it's okay with us. And deliver it, uh, I, I would like to go forward with that, we have money set aside to do that, but, just wanted to let you guys know.
Yep, just move forward, whatever way you feel best, Andrew.
All right, the, uh, the radio towers that we have next to our building over here, there's a few things on it that are still in operation, one of them is a repeater for the fire, uh, grounds. To remove some of the clutter off the towers, uh, in the near future, we may take some of the antennas down, so. The, uh, EMA is looking at changing their police radios over, and, I don't know, a bunch of backstory, but they, they may upgrade the equipment. Now for the fire repeater, uh, and to do that, I, I think it's a good time to clean up a lot of the clutter, I think we have like, I counted ten antennas, and I was tracing the hard lines. And only two of them are connected to anything, so it's just a lot of stuff up there that doesn't help anything.
Just the, the only one that I, that we need to make sure we leave up there, obviously, is one of the school buses.
Yep.
And I think the rest of it, I agree with you, is probably null and void at this point.
Yeah. And then, last meeting, we had the aggregation presentation, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, I, I think we should do that, we, we saved a lot of money, or not. A significant amount of money on the electric, we might as well aggregate the natural gas as well, unless somebody has opposition to it.
I'm, I'm good with it, I talked to Kale, um, a couple days ago, he's got the contracts ready, the, the sample contracts, and what it is, is that, uh. You know, we can put it on the agenda, please put electrical aggregation on the agenda for the next meeting in October.
I would say utilities aggregation.
Yes, yes, because he does have some natural gas ones in there, yes. Basically, what he says is, if council agrees to enter that contract, we enter that contract, and the price is on that date, so he can't really give us a number, but it's not gonna change much from what he presented at the last meeting. So.
Have we solicited what the current provider's gonna offer?
I have not, no.
Just curious.
So I, I, I agree with Andrew, I think that it's something that we need to do, we used to, uh, we've had several discussions about aggregation, and I really moved forward with it. I do know that there's a cycle with that, sometimes when you aggregate, you save a lot of money, sometimes you don't, that's the, you know, that's just the way the, the cycle goes, so. We'll, we'll make sure that we, uh, make a decision on whether or not to enter into that contract with them at the next meeting.
That's all I had.
Any other business?
I had a citizen just now ask about an update on Bates Road.
We are still waiting to hear from the, uh, owner of the property to the north. Uh, what does the Streets Analysis Committee think about in good faith filling the potholes one more time?
I'm good with that.
Really?
What are we using to fill the potholes first?
Probably just rock.
C A six.
C A six.
Do we have anything any bigger?
I have some one inch, but it won't pack like C A six.
Maybe the larger holes, can we put some of the larger stuff in there, and then pack it with the C A six?
Probably do, use the one inch as a base.
Yes, I think that'd be, I think that would give us some longer jet, jet capacity of it, so, so I think, my past experience, I think that would work better. If it puts some little bit bigger in there, I'm, otherwise I'm good with it.
I'm also good with it, go ahead and get that done, Matt, please.
Jordan, have you heard anything back from the property owner to the north? Can we send him, can we request that you send him another follow-up letter?
Yeah.
Please do that, thank you.
Any other business? Public comments on the non-agenda items, sorry, Mrs., uh.
Debbie Lynn. Debbie Lynn.
From North Garden Street.
It's Lion.
Oh, Lion, sorry.
Yeah, um, every time we have a heavy rain, my ditch fills up, the neighbors fills up, and it goes down into Orbol Vandalos, and it just sets there. Then it, it tends to fill up between my house and Ronnie's, and it pools, and makes a flood back in behind my house. Is there any way we can get the street department, I brought three pictures, I was gonna show Matt, um. Flushing that line out, or whatever you do to blow it out, or whatever.
Like jet?
On the chest of the street.
What needs to happen is the ditches have filled in, they're sealed in, and as far as under Orbol's driveway, I have yet to find a culvert there.
There is one there.
Well, I'm not saying there isn't one there, I just haven't found it.
It's at the, right there in the alley as you pull in.
Right, I, yet to find one there.
Which should pool on around, out in the chestnut street, all around the curve.
Yeah, I know where, I know exactly where you're talking about, but I have yet to find it there.
Right, I mean, I think, I think Matt knows there's a culvert there, you just can't find a pipe that goes under there.
But if I gotta be able to access into, with my jet.
You can move it.
No, I, I've been down there when that happens.
But I mean, the water just sets, it just sets there.
It has nowhere to go.
Exactly, it's, and all it does is back up in my yard, I'm just tired of the water every time it rains. I've had my shed flooded twice out there, and I've lost some stuff in there that I wanted to keep, cause the very first time it flooded, I didn't realize that it even done that. After I moved in, nobody said anything, well, I had to throw away a lot of stuff, but I've got everything setting up on plastic crates out there now, so if it floods, it won't damage what I do have out there. But, the water used to run across the street over there, come down and flood that whole side out, clear down the chestnut, then it'd fill up over into my street, and it'd all be flooded. Now, that whole side is empty for some reason, now it's draining over into the corner lot where Mrs. Tarrant used to live, where Judy Weber lives, and it's almost like it. It's running in there so fast, it's coming back out of there, and now it's all running.
A lot of the times, what I have noticed is, in several rains, the rains that you're talking about, those, those drains will be, a lot of them leak moving, I mean, there's water moving, it's just more water than that drain can particularly handle.
Why is it the water's not even running on that side of the street more?
Yeah, I can't explain that.
Cause it used to flood that side, and then come all the way across, the whole end used to be flooded, now it's just on my side of the street, that side stays dry. And I don't understand.
Even down by Judy's house down there, she's had water standing there several times.
Yeah, no. No, yeah, no, she's got a lot of water now, it's almost like it's coming out of there as fast as it runs in, it's jumping back out.
Good question.
But the drain on the corner is completely plugged up with, with, uh.
On Tarrant's corner?
No, across the street there, where Copaz's used to live.
Oh, Copaz's.
That, that thing is completely run over with grass.
Okay. Best thing I can tell you that we can do is we can jet it out initially, but as far as, well, like where Orbol's at, I have to be able to, to be able to enter that with a jet. In other words, I gotta find the culvert, because when you jet, you're jetting against the flow of water, so if the flow of water's going that way, I'm jetting this way, you following me?
Oh, you have to go.
I go backwards, I, when I jet, I clean, I go in backwards, as opposed to the way the water flows, that way, whenever I throw water in, it pulls any impugment out.
Well, that's all, that's all covered up, though, so how, how you gonna know where it's at?
That's what I was saying, I don't know where it's at, you know, not saying that I can't investigate it.
Yeah, yeah, that's all concrete now, yeah, that's gotta be plugged up somewhere now, I've been complaining back when Mike Patridge was doing it. I've called on the phone, I've talked to Laura Lee, and I've called up here and talked to ladies, and they always say, in which. Whoever came down, and they just dig holes in front of my culvert, well, my culvert is plum open, that's not the issue, the issue is down at Orbol Vandalos' house. But if we can get something going there where the water won't just lay there.
No, I understand, it's gotta have a way to get out, it's gotta have an exit.
But I see your point, too, there's, you don't know where to go, start it at the.
I mean, I gotta be able to find it before I can easily get into it.
I see your point now, what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying, it's not that, you know, I don't wanna do that, no, I do, but.
I see your point now, what you're saying, but, I mean, just so we can try to figure out what the deal is on that.
What's your, what's your intersection, you say garden?
Um, it's garden and chestnut.
Okay, that's what I said.
North garden and chestnut, the other street is.
Jasper.
Now, said, walked past everything.
To the, to the south of Jasper.
Yeah. Yeah, I see that, I don't know why it's just going down one side of the street now instead of both sides, but. Yep, like I said, if.
We'll investigate into it, and one of my initial plans is come spring, obviously I can't do much ditch work this time of year, because I'll burn it, because I'll run away. Is to just basically make a list of a week to a week and a half's worth of work, rent a mini excavator, and get it cleaned, cause it works a whole ton better than a vacuum cleaner. Get a lot bit more done, but, uh.
Well, thank you.
When you say heavy rain, about how much does it have to rain before this problem happens?
Um, I would say at least probably an inch and a half, two inches, just downpour. And just a, a rain here and there, it's fine, but it's when you get a heavy rain.
It's when you get the downpour, the heavy, heavy one, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Is that all you had, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for coming, you're welcome. Any other public comments on the non-agenda items? Any need for executive session? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Joyce. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn, thank you.
Here's, here's my thoughts for some additional, you know, feel free to. Draft it again and send it back.
I thought all your stuff was interesting.
I think the initial direction we were going, I thought we were trying to work towards.
I thought that's what the letters.
Yeah.
That's the first setting.
But I thought we were gonna still put the rock.
They're next, man.
They're next, man.
I know, I know.